Calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, September 14th, 7:01 PM. And I'm going to be toggling back and forth here, so don't mind me going back and forth to read the agenda. So we are here to finalize and close the October 3rd special town meeting warrant. We do have a copy of the warrant. Peter, the one I'm looking at still has the red lines through, is that the latest?
Yeah, so I can't, I don't know how to send you one without it. I sent it to Sherri, she didn't get the red lines. But what we will print out is without the red line.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're looking at the latest version.
And so if you look at the last, if you look at the very last page, it has the date on it, given under our hands this 14th day, it says 14th day.
Let me look to make sure that's the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, just make sure you have that, it says fine.
Okay, that's the one I am looking at. I'd just like to make sure we're all looking at the same thing here.
Yep.
Does everybody have that one? And I know there was a last minute email that went out also regarding the tax write-off, what we'll, tax work off, I mean, we'll look at that and talk about that, but I just want to give everybody a heads up that an email went out around, was it 6 o'clock tonight, Peter?
6 o'clock, yes.
Yeah, so we may want to just revisit that once we get to that article. I'm not sure if everybody can reach their email while they're on this call. So we're here tonight just to put the articles on the warrant, and then next week, we will be voting as a board on the articles, whether we support them or not. So typically, what we do is we read through the articles, and we ask if there's any questions, and if we agree to put them on the warrant.
Okay. So Erica, just so this is just to put it on the warrant, and then next week is like, we like this one and I don't like this one?
Right, well, we'll put it in, our vote will go on the Board of Selectmen vote, 3 to 1, 5 to 0, our votes will go on next week.
Those are next week.
Those are next week. This is just to approve what's going on the warrant.
Okay.
And this would be the warrant that you have to sign this week, you know, by Thursday at noon, okay?
Before Thursday? Can I sign it on Thursday?
Yes, Thursday morning, if you do it by noon, that would be great, it gets posted by Norm. Throughout, Derek thinks there'll be seven copies for you.
Yeah, just make sure you get in there and you sign seven copies by Thursday at noon.
Okay. So. So should I make a motion for the warrant as a whole and walk through each article, or should we make, should we look at articles and make a motion for each article?
We can, I think we should just read through.
Okay.
And if you're volunteering to read through, you may read through, and then we can see if we have any questions, or whether we want to hold it, and then we can just vote on them all at once, unless we're going to hold them like we typically do.
Okay. So Article 1, monetary increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee, presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Finance Committee.
Okay. Okay, if you want to read the second one, and then we'll, at the end, we'll go back to see if you want to hold anyone. Because nobody made a motion, so that's fine, we could just read through them.
Okay.
If anybody has questions.
I didn't know I wasn't going to get breaks.
No, that's fine.
Article 2.
You don't have to read the whole thing either, we can each read some, it's fine.
That's okay. Bills of prior fiscal year to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Town Accountant and Town Administrator.
Okay, I'll ask a question here. Peter, do you have any bills that are for this article at this point in time?
Officially, no. For some reason, I recall something about $2,500 related to stormwater.
Okay.
Speaking to Derek today, he doesn't have that in his inbox, but he was going to go through everything, make sure we've identified
Okay.
any that would apply. So right now, possibly approximately a $2,500.
Right.
Okay.
That always can change at the last minute anyway, so. All right, that we should break, Jen.
Article 3, fiscal year 2021 budget adjustments to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate to borrow or to transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to adjust town expenses from what was previously approved in Article 6 of the Millville, June 22nd, 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for specific departments as identified for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Town Administrator, the Town Accountant, and Finance Committee.
Peter, will you remind me what was Article 6 on the annual town meeting?
Well, that was the omnibus budget, so basically, this is adjusting those items that the voters approved. They approved by department, so for the extent there are any changes, what will be shown is prior approved amount of the department total, the specific items that are in need in the amounts, and then the subsequent adjusted total of that. The voters will approve on the amounts by department, increases or changes by department.
So we get a spreadsheet with each department then, and what it was, and what is the suggested increase or decrease, and then vote on it?
Yeah, essentially, that's what's going to happen, it'll just be for those that are requiring changes. We'll put that together, get it to the Finance Committee by Wednesday afternoon for the Thursday night meeting. So you'll see that sometime this week, and it will be part of your packets for next Monday night's meeting.
Right. Sounds good. Article 4, reimbursement of general stabilization fund for payment to purchaser of 20 De Prater Street to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of $183,000 to be placed in the general stabilization fund for the purpose of reimbursing the general stabilization fund for money spent reimbursing the purchaser of the law identified as 20 De Prater Street, submitted by the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Article 5.
Anybody have questions on that? I think we're all very familiar with that one. If not, we can go on to 5.
Okay, fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the OPEB liability trust fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired employees, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by Town Administrator and Finance Committee.
Peter, question on this one is, are we going to have an amount in there prior to the meeting?
So the motion will, the motion made at town meeting will include an amount.
Okay.
Finance Committee will be discussing this and coming up with a much, so I don't have an amount for you tonight.
Okay.
You might possibly have that for next Monday night. Then the Finance Committee is having a public hearing, I think, a week from Thursday, when they will finalize the amounts, you know, their recommendations for each of these monetary articles, including these holdovers from the Spring Town, OPEBs in the next two or three.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on that one?
One, one general question. For any of the monetary articles, will they have the amounts in them?
By Monday?
In the warrant?
No, so the warrant does not include the amounts, it's included in the motions, and ideally, it would be included in your supportive the article. But I don't know that you actually have the amounts for these types of things. In the past, when you voted to recommend supporting all of these particular articles, I think it really comes down to you know, how much free cash there is, where Finance Committee has fallen out on these. If you have particular, you know, the Board of Selectmen have a particular amount that they're mostly comfortable with. So, you know, it might be not until the public hearing from Finance Committee for the actual amounts of Articles 5, 6, and 7 or more.
So we don't even, we don't have, we don't know the numbers right now, or?
No, no, so we don't know the numbers right now, and it's also part of the bigger picture, if you think, you know, we have free cash remaining from basically what we had at annual town meeting, that was 900 something thousand, right? And a big slug of it in Article 4 that you went over is input specifically to replenish the general stabilization fund for the amounts used for the De Prater Street reimbursement, right? So Finance Committee, we talked about this briefly last meeting, but the Finance Committee is very particular in ensuring that money gets replenished in the general stabilization fund. What happens further may depend on, you know, reading the tea leaves, in essence, in terms of what the state might still think of doing that we don't already know about, that might impact whether one wants to tie up free cash, tie up is probably not the right word, but to place free cash monies otherwise available for future needs into some of these funds. So that's, that's the best way I think of explaining it right now. I don't know anybody that has, you know, the Finance Committee may have something in mind on each of these, I don't know that yet. I don't.
Yep.
Do you suspect we'll know by Monday?
I think you'll have an inkling by Monday, but I don't know if you'll have a final, there will be a final one.
I think it's important for us to have the amounts.
Yeah.
So we know what money we're committing to what activities.
So you're not, in the warrant article, even in your support of this, I would argue, with my impression, that you're not specifically supporting an amount, you're supporting the article that does something with a yet to be specified amount. I mean, it's a, it's, you know, it's a nuance. I understand the lack of comfort for that, you may say, I don't want to put any money in the capital stabilization fund. You really, so, I don't know, I guess I'd look to you all for how you think when you vote in support of the warrant articles, this is specifically written. You're either in support of it or you're not. You might do it in terms of, you know, subject to knowing the amount, I don't know.
Right. And another thing, even if we put it on before we know the amounts, we can always make a motion as a resident on the, on the town floor, to say, I disagree with this, say, 10,000, for instance, I recommend 5,000 for these reasons, so. We've had motions on the floor where amounts were changed.
No, so I don't disagree with that, but I guess as a board, like the recommend, for us to recommend something or not recommend something. Like, so for example, the next article that is capital stabilization, I know we depleted that, which was $100,000, and we depleted that to purchase a truck for the Highway Department in the spring, so it went, you know, right down to zero. So I believe the amount that they're going to advise that to replenish at least that amount. I think we might want to consider more. I think we should have an opinion on that as a board, and like, say it's 200,000. So just, or think that's a good move or a bad move, and it seems.
Well, the Finance Committee is the advisory board, and I'm sure that they'll put in what they think they should be in each article. So I think this is more, more of a discussion for Monday, we may or may not have the numbers on Monday, and if we don't feel comfortable, we each can vote however we please, if we don't feel comfortable recommending it without a number, we can discuss it then and vote how you please. But for tonight, I think it's important that we put the option on the table to have it as an article on the warrant.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. Article 6.
Any other discussion on this one? Good? Okay, let's go, 6.
To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the capital stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator.
Any questions on that one? Okay, go to 7.
Article 7, general stabilization fund to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee.
Any questions on that one? Okay, next.
Article 8, Highway Department front loader slash backhoe to see if the town will vote to allocate $45,000 from Millville's general stabilization account to be used to purchase a used front loader slash backhoe for use by the Highway Department, submitted by the Highway Surveyor and the Capital Program Committee.
Any questions on this one from anyone?
I can provide a lot of detail on that one if anyone's interested.
I think we can move on.
Okay, Article 9, excuse me, the BMR Regional Agreement Revision to see if the town of Millville will vote to approve the Blackstone Millville Regional School District amended regional agreement as presented by the School Committee dated April 27th, 2020, which are on file at the Millville Town Clerk's Office, Superintendent of Schools Office, and the Millville Public Library, submitted by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
Peter, do you have any input on this one? Have you heard back from the school district? Because is it, is it correct that Blackstone is not having a special town meeting this year?
I don't know the definitive answer to that question, I know Jane is, you know, on the call, so you may want to hear what she may have to say about that.
Jane?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Okay, do you still want this article included on our warrant item?
Yes, please, and we are in conversation with Blackstone and going to their Board of Selectmen meeting on the 22nd, and hoping they'll have an October meeting as well.
Okay, then we'll, we'll leave it as is for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on that one? Okay, we can move on to Article 10.
Article 10, should I read what's in the email or what's on the paper?
Well, that's one of the questions, I mean, this is how the warrant's set up now.
Yeah.
Peter, I think everybody was on the email, because how the warrant is listed to us right now doesn't have the veterans included, but we did get an email saying that we needed to change the verbiage to have the veterans included, correct?
No, so what you have on the warrant article, in order to have the veterans, you have to have a separate and distinct warrant article. And I did send that draft of that article about 6 o'clock or so, if you want to put that on there. My recommendation is that I think the intent, you know, for this information to Tina, the senior director of the, you know, senior center director who's the sponsor of this article, and she's worked on it for some time now. The main goal is to at least get the seniors on, this is what this article does do, and it is using the $10,000 that was always talked about as the amount to use. I don't know, if you added the other one, then the question begs the question whether you change this amount and split the 10,000 in some fashion, or you add an additional 10,000 by way of adding the veterans. But my recommendation in my correspondence to you is to, you know, at least get the senior tax work off program in on this warrant, and consider for the, you know, Spring Town meeting, adding the veterans in if it could be an additional amount. So that's one way to do it, you could put both in, but then you're dealing with subject to an amount.
Right, and that's, that's where there's some discomfort, because we've talked about this article several times, and we always use the 10,000. We also talked about it being seniors, then it went to seniors and veterans, so now I feel like there's a little bit of, it's been muddied a little, and I don't, personally, I don't feel comfortable having all the information in front of me right now to, I won't add another 10,000 because we haven't given anybody enough information about this over the last few meetings, and it came out at the last minute.
Chairman Blake.
Yes.
Jennifer Wang, I also think that, you know, we've started with the seniors, I think it will give a good temperature of what's out there and who's using it, and then it's only really six months, and then that would be a great time in the spring to introduce the veteran piece of it.
Yeah, I don't like to exclude them, but at the same time, I think, I don't want to do anything in a hurry in the last minute and screw something up, to be just poignant here. I don't know if anybody else has comments on that one. Anybody else wants to weigh in on that, give their opinion? I don't like to do things in a haste, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little worried about making a mistake as well, because I was thinking we could just add, we could have one article for the seniors and the article for the veterans. And I don't know if we could have language in there that said the combined, the cap would be the combination of requests from seniors and veterans. I don't know if that's because that's the point, Erica, that you're concerned with, we don't want to have 20, we want to keep it at 10,000 across these two.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to do this in a hasty way and miss something, just because.
Okay, how about this? So I got from Brian, if you look at what I, what he wrote, or what I forwarded to you, that line, we can actually strike that line in both, if you want to do that, to cap the amount, to make that as part of a motion, the amount that's capped for each population.
I'm just reading through it really quickly again now. Katie, you're saying strike which line?
The line that says this program is to be capped at $10,000. So you could have both articles, so you could add the Veterans Tax Work Off Program, it was a separate article, using the language provided by council.
Yeah.
And not include the line that specifies the amount, or that's capped.
I don't feel comfortable with not capping it, though. I don't feel comfortable with not capping it.
Yeah.
I'm just reading through. And I don't want to split it either, 5,000, 5,000, because you may get 10 seniors and one veteran.
Yeah.
So I think we should probably, I'll take the, my approach would be to leave the warrant as written for now, and add the veterans in, in the spring meeting.
And would you still?
Because I don't think we have enough time to sort this out and get this posted. And I'm looking for, put from anybody else on the board as well.
So my, my only concern is that it will, it won't happen for the veterans. You know, once we do it for the seniors, it'll be, you know, that sector of the community that obviously pushes for strongly, and it won't end up happening for the veterans, that's my guess.
So what is your recommendation?
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't like to have non-capped, because obviously, that's, you know, reckless, but there has to be, or I'd like to see some way to make sure that there's going to be inclusion of the veteran population. And surely, there's going to be an overlap, because a lot of our folks are senior citizens too, whether veterans. But that's my only concern.
So was there any language from the attorney, Peter, that said we can have a combination of the veterans and seniors capped at a total of 10,000, but not pick and choose who gets which amount?
Well, no, no, he's saying you really need two separate and distinct warrant articles, because they're referencing two separate and distinct general law sections, basically. One is 5K, and the other one is, you know, Chapter 59, both are, Chapter 59, one's 5K, Section 5K, the other's Section 5N, that creates the need for the distinction.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
And this all happened, I mean, he was away, so this all, this all moved as of 3 o'clock.
Yeah. And I know originally, the intent was for the seniors and the veterans were added on, which was great, but now we're finding this out in the 11th hour.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Jennifer Wang, the only thing I have to say is that the veterans do have the opportunity to go through the Veterans Agent to see if they qualify for, you know, funding, which the town gets reimbursed for, but it does set them up for the ability. They all can apply for abatements with their disabilities, low income, you know, wetlands through the assessors, so I just think, I agree, I think we need to stay with, like, the seniors. And I think, Kevin, I hear you in what you're saying about the veterans, but I think a lot of them will fall within the senior bracket, and I think knowing what we access in the spring will help us determine how to proportion between the two.
No, I, I guess my response to that would be the requirements to go through a VSO officer as opposed to a very, I would say, general approach that this is going to have, would change somebody's ability to do it. And I, I understand your point, but I just want to make sure that, you know, everything is provided fairly across the board, that's all. And again, I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I, I'm just concerned that if, if we only do the seniors right now, next time around, it will be, well, that's all we got.
So it's up to an amount of $1,000, what if we did 7,500 for seniors and 2,500 for veterans? And then that way, next, in the spring, we could look at funding them again, at, look, you don't use that as an interest, if you're like, wow, we went through the 2,500 by December 1st, and then for seniors, just to give something, and the reason why I did veterans less, Kevin, is because of the overlap of seniors and veterans that we've talked about. Yeah, I just don't want you to, I wanted to be clear.
No, I, I just want to make sure that we are looking at this at, in a very broad way, and to understand the potential impact on folks that are, veterans that are not necessarily seniors.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm in agreement, again, just because it's coming up at the 11th hour to us, unfortunately, we thought we can have everybody in one group and not have to say who gets how much. We had it, originally, it was proposed to us as a senior program, then it was a senior and a veterans program at $10,000, which was great, but now, that's not the case, we found out. It's good that we found out before we're bringing this to town meeting, but in the same sense, we either have to put on two, another article, and change the amounts, or leave it as is, so.
I mean, I think if we add on, Erica, because to your point of trying to combine things and making a mistake, but I think if we had one for 7,500 for seniors and one for 2,500 for veterans, that would be very clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, just because the 10,000 is what we've been talking about, and that's what the town has heard us talk about. And I haven't had anybody come and say that they didn't agree with that, but I didn't want to, you know, agree to more than that at this point in time, because that's what's been presented
Yep.
at several meetings.
Yep.
So I think, once we get through the rest of these articles, if anybody wants to make a motion to add it, we can do that, and hold anything at that time.
Okay, I still don't read Article 10, so do you want me to go ahead and read it?
Any more discussion? Oh, you didn't read it?
I didn't read it.
Why don't you read that, and if anybody wants more discussion at the end, we'll do it then.
Okay. Article 10, Senior Tax Work Off Program to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, providing for the adoption by the Town of Millville for a senior volunteer tax relief work off program, in which persons over the age of 60 volunteer to provide services to the town. In exchange for such volunteer services, the town shall reduce the property tax bill by abatement in the amount of up to $1,000 maximum. This program is to be capped at $10,000. The hourly rate for such services shall be established by the Board of Selectmen and not exceed the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth, or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Senior Center Director.
I have one general question about this article, which would be, what types of work do we think would be the seniors or veterans, or whoever takes care, advantage of this program, what would they exactly do?
So I believe what, I believe what was told to us in previous meetings was we, the department would ask for the need, say, for the assessors, for example. They said, hey, we have a need for somebody to come in and file or do X, Y, and Z, and the person would be essentially interviewed at their skill set, we're not going to put somebody in that doesn't have the skills to provide the service to each department. So if it's, if it's somebody that needs to do something that's more physical, they would have to be, come in and be interviewed and say that they can handle the physical job, or the, or the computer work, or whatever it may be.
Okay, I'm just thinking, because a lot of departments have more sensitive information, that's why I'm wondering how that would work. For instance, like, as you say, the Assessors Department, they deal with tax documents and stuff like that, and so I'm wondering how do we do that, considering that it's more of a volunteer type of position that they'd be taking of that.
I believe that the guys would be under, Peter, I would say the guys would be under your. I believe that the guys would be under, uh, Peter, I would say the guys would be under your discretion. Obviously, we're not going to be putting people in a position where they're looking at information they shouldn't. Um, but most information, most information in the town hall is public records, so.
Yeah, so that's right, so confidentiality would be part of it, the people would probably have to take the basic oath that everybody takes.
Right.
If you're an employee in the work, there would be, the supervision would be by the department head wherever they are working. Known yet what, what the demand might be.
Peter, we can't hear you.
So it's unknown what the demand might be for the, uh, departments for additional resources and it's not a free-for-all, you know, let us know what you want and anybody can have somebody. So there'll have to be some process and I know that Tina, the Senior Center Director, the other part of it is, uh, you know, uh, the burden of administering the thing and Tina basically volunteered to do that, so. I think we'll have to see how it goes and we'll see who's actually, uh, available to do something and what those needs are, but I'm pretty sure there's plenty of places that people could use some help, whether it's in-town hall, whether it's, uh, at the library, whether it's over at the police station, I mean, you name it. I, I tend to be uncomfortable about the thought of a senior digging ditches for, uh, the highway department, but.
Chuggling sidewalks.
Yeah, probably not something that people are going to want to do, but maybe, you never know. And so yes, we'd have to be sure that that's a prudent hire because essentially you're hiring somebody for a limited duration, limited amount of work at a limited rate of pay, basically. So.
I mean, and, excuse me, my other concern would be that since they're not, since this is would be a limited amount of time that they would be able to work, how many hours they'd be able to work. I would wonder how much time would be dedicated towards the learning curve of whatever position they would take because that would take out some of the money considering you have to pay people to be trained. And depending on what the, what the tasks were, it could take a serious chunk of their abatement.
So I, I would respond to that, that's a valid response and a valid point to consider when you're voting to support this or not, as well as for the voters to consider in supporting that. I don't know if that's necessarily, uh, something you want to nail down tonight, but I, I think you, you raise a very valid point. The training to do something will take time and that time is burning the, the use and the, uh, and the assistance that someone's going to, assistance someone's going to provide.
I would think that the department would realize the scope and the number of hours this person has and they're not going to try to train them to be a town accountant. Um, I think it's more of an assistance type of position that they would be asking them to help out with because they know they have a limited number of hours they can work. Would be my assumption.
Yeah, I think we can manage to that, right? So you'd be interviewing people, you see their skill set.
Yeah.
If it turns out that they're only going to work 20 hours, certainly we wouldn't put them in a role that required 10 or 15 hours of training.
Right. It's a temp, it's essentially a temp position. And if anybody's ever worked with temps before, they know that you're not going to try to train them to be the CEO of the company, so.
I trust that Peter will manage that very effectively.
Yeah, right. Any other discussion on this item? And we can move on to 11?
Okay. Article 11, Public Way Acceptance of Hurtow Road. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way Hurtow Road as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled, Street Acceptance Plan of Land of Hurtow Road in Millville, Massachusetts, Worcester County, prepared by Andrew Survey and Engineering, uh, Oxford, Massachusetts. This looks weird, so queered. It says scale 1 through 40, 1 equals 40. Dated September 30th, 2016, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen of to acquire the fee to or permanent easements in said roadway and any drainage access utility and/or other easements related thereto or do or act anything in relation thereto.
And I believe they already have the hearing with the, um.
They had a public hearing on the 11th, I actually watched it today, it was only an 18-minute meeting. Um, and they did vote for or nothing to, uh, accept all Articles 11, 12, and 13, not in the form of an article, they voted to accept the roads then.
Okay.
Yeah, but they were unanimous, um, there's someone was missing, it wasn't a 5, oh, one of the people couldn't make the meeting and I don't recall that gentleman's name, so it was four.
Okay. All right, any discussions on this one? Okay, we can go on to 12.
This, you know, this one as well as the other two is going to require, so it's my understanding that the planning board voted recommend acceptance to the Board of Selectmen, and there is a two-step process that I only learned about this afternoon from council. Who is going to connect me with his other partner, uh, Lee Smith, who's expert on this stuff. Though the process is fairly straightforward, but hasn't been done, it requires you, the Board of Selectmen, to accept these roads in some form, it's a formal process. It's not difficult from what I understand from Brian Riley, it's not tedious and it can be done well in time prior to the town meeting. So which, council's recommendation was that if the need to have that done before town meeting, should not interfere with tonight's acceptance, uh, on the, of this warrant. So that's my recommendation is you proceed with these under the assumption that you will have the proper steps taken to accept the roads. If you choose not to accept the roads, then you can withdraw the articles.
Right. And typically they bring us a copy of the plans and we have to sign off on it as the board. So if we don't.
So I'm hoping to have that on our agenda for Monday night.
Right, and if, if that doesn't happen before town meeting, we strike the article at town meeting, we've done that before.
Peter, Jennifer Wang, if you could just confirm, I don't know if that needs to be like a public hearing on our pot. Um, I'm sure Lee Smith is very knowledgeable on that, but if you could check with him. Just so if we have to open a public hearing and close, I'm not sure, but I know it does, the layout needs to come from the town, uh, the BOS.
Right, yeah, so, yes, of course, so I don't know, again, I don't know the process, Brian didn't indicate any time constraints here, knowing the date of our town meeting, today's.
It just, it, the Board of Selectmen just needs to vote to approve prior to, um, town meeting, I know we've done it in the back room 20 minutes before, uh, town meeting too, so it can be done.
Right. And we typically, yeah, we typically put them on the, uh, warrant and if we need to strike them, we strike them.
Because I know that they've worked hard, I know that the Hurtows have worked very hard to get, they've been trying to get this on.
Yeah, it's been.
Town meetings. Know that the planning board and the highway department worked hard to get all of the, got all their eyes crossed over. Steps it had to be taken. There are the roadway for the town.
Peter, we can't hear you again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right.
So anyway, Friday's planning board meeting was the culmination of a lot of effort to get to that point.
Okay.
So if we need to have a public hearing, Peter, can you find that out by tomorrow? Because I think we have to have it posted 14 days in advance and do all that other good stuff, right?
That's correct.
So we need to post it like Wednesday? So that we could have it on the 30th?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you need it, but, uh, I'll certainly be finding that out.
Okay, great.
Okay, awesome.
Next, uh, next one?
Article 12, Public Acceptance of Rondon Road. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way Rondon Road as the heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on plan entitled, Street Acceptance Plan of Land of Rondon Road in Millville, Massachusetts, Worcester County, prepared by Andrew Survey and Engineering, Oxford, Massachusetts, scale 1 equals, oh, this is Liz, scale of 1 inch equals 40 feet. Okay, now I get it on the plan. Dated September 30th, 2016, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen of to acquire the fee to or permanent easements in said roadway and any drainage access utility and/or other easements related thereto or do or act anything in relation thereto submitted by the Planning Board and Highway Surveyor.
Is Rondon part of those roads that are over in that area with the Albert Drive and Carriage? I'm not familiar with Rondon.
Yeah, yes, we are familiar with Rondon.
Okay. All right, want to go for the next one?
Yes, I would love to. Article 13, Public Way Acceptance of Albert Drive, partial parentheses, Carriage 1, close parentheses. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way Albert Drive as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled, Street Acceptance Plan of Land of Albert Drive in Millville, Massachusetts, Worcester County, prepared by Andrew Survey and Engineering, Oxford Association, with a scale of 1 inch equals 40 feet. Dated September 30th, 2016, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen of to acquire the fee to or permanent easements in said roadway and any drainage access utility and/or other easements related thereto or do or act anything in relation thereto submitted by the Planning Board and Highway Surveyor.
Okay, any more discussion on those items?
Yes, I just would want to make sure we put these on the warrant and can approve them because these people who live on these roads are paying property taxes in Massachusetts and, in Massachusetts, in Millville. And not able to get the same kind of, I mean, they are paying in Massachusetts too. But the more important point is they're paying them in Millville and they're not able to get the same access like the highway department and things like that. And so I think those citizens should be treated equitably, equally.
Hmm.
And.
I, I, Madam Chair, Jennifer Wang, I agree, um, I'm just glad that the, um, the developer is now in compliance of everything and that we can move forward because this has been a long time coming for those.
It sure has, sure has.
Actually, to talk about that, the handicap and all that, they, Brian spoke about how, Brian Malali spoke about how everything was in order and he was satisfied at the meeting on the 11th.
Right, it's been a long time coming. Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion on the warrant?
So I will make a motion that we put forth the warrant as read for the special town meeting on October 3rd, 2020.
Looking for a second?
Jennifer Dean-Wing, second?
Any discussion?
So is this where we would add the veterans? I'm sorry that I'm new and I'm asking all these questions in this meeting longer.
No, that's, that's why I'm going slow here because I assume somebody's going to want to add that.
Okay.
No.
So I, I would recommend if somebody adds it, we put it after this, the, um, seniors and bump everything down or renumber.
Yes. So I would like, uh, to make a motion that we insert a new article between the current Articles 10 and 11 for a Veterans Tax Work Off Program.
So just a point of order, we do already have a motion on the table, you could amend your motion to include that article.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Can I amend my motion to insert a article, a new article between current Articles 10 and 11 for a Veterans Tax Work Off Program?
Okay, and were there any edits to Article 10? For an amount?
Madam Chair, I'm going to propose that we wait, I, I heard the numbers 7,500 and 2,500, but if you look at what they get paid, um, we're going to, we're not going to have enough in each, if that makes sense. So if it's a thousand each, then we're going to have 500 left in one, but money left in another. So I think we should put a little more thought into the money amount on those items. Um, maybe we could do that, you know, for town meeting, but I just want to make sure that we're not sitting with like 500 sitting in an account or because of the maximum which people can apply for.
That's definitely a good point, maybe we should split it, uh, eight and two or, um, and then obviously we can amend this.
But as a maximum, some people might do 400, some people might do 800s, and people might do 600, some people, you know what I mean? Like it, you could get a lot of different amounts. So, I mean, we could do, go 7,000 and 3,000 if we want to keep it like so, seven people can max it out and three people can max it out. Um, but there, you know, there might be people who would do 200, 300, someone does 700. So that's, that's, because I, initially I had the same exact thought to Selectman Wing, but as it's a max and not everyone maybe wants to work the max, maybe some people do want to do 500.
Yeah, I like the idea of the, the rounding it at the thousand. Um, just because, that's just my personal opinion, just because if you get somebody and they're at the end of the program and they're working on something, they get to the 500, it's kind of changed in somebody on one of the programs.
Okay.
And hopefully by, hopefully by spring meeting, we have this, um, a little bit more in tune, so.
Okay.
You can make your motion how you wish, but I would make the recommendation to round at the thousand.
Okay. And so then I would cap the senior tax program at 7,000. As part of my motion.
And then your motion for the new article, you have to read all the verbiage?
3,000. Oh.
Which is in the email.
Yep, no, I have it. Okay. Um, so the Veterans Tax Work Off Article, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N, providing for the adoption by the Town of Millville for a veteran volunteer tax relief work-off program in which a veteran or the spouse of a veteran, in the case where the veteran is deceased, deceased or has a service-connected disability, may volunteer to provide services to the town in exchange for such volunteer services. The town shall reduce the property tax, property tax bill by abatement in the amount of up to $1,000 maximum. This program is to be capped at $3,000. The hourly rate for such services shall be established by the Board of Selectmen and not exceed the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth or take any other action relative thereto. And I guess that would be recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
We're not doing recommend.
Submitted, sorry, submitted by the Board.
Submitted, yeah. Okay. And we're looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on any of the article items? Um, and then we'll have to renumber. So each, um, article below 10 will be renumbered. Article 11, A Public Way to Accept Hurtow Road will become 12. A public way accepting Rondon Road will become 13. Public way accepting Albert Drive, Carriage 1, will become 14 as the final article on the warrant. Any further discussion? All in favor to, um, post the warrant as we've discussed? Aye?
Aye.
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 The unanimous 5-0, we will post the article, uh, post the warrant as edited here tonight, Katie will take care of the edits. Um, please send out an email to the board once they're all printed so we can get down there and sign them as soon as possible, noon on Thursday being the latest.
Will do.
Fantastic. Any, um, items come up in the last 48 hours that we need to discuss?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, see you next Monday.
Good night.
Good night. Aye. Thank you, Jesse.